We're good to go.
To be in six thirty P M on Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three and have a quorum. Of call the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting to order. Shane, I think I'm gonna wait to read the planning board. Remote meeting instructions until after eight and two, if that's okay.
Uh, yeah, I think it's understood. But yeah, we can do that once we reopen, open session if you prefer.
I'll read that public hearing notice prior to the the public hearing and item three, so. Item, so item one was called order, item two is executive session, this is six thirty seven P M. This meeting will come. The planning board wants to make an executive session pursuant to M G L, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one. And some construction risk decant four, four, nine, minus. Four, 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 two thousand and seven. To discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation in the case of John P. Weldon as trustee of Weldon Properties Realty Trust. Whereas Patrick Frisco and all fifty-four grand back or an open meeting or an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation. Litigation position for the planning board in the in the chair, so the players get to seek the advice of legal counsel. So do we have a motion to leave open session and to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is that Mr. Gellman?
Yes.
I can second that.
Good, just one comment, we have Gina Gasconi on, she's not part of this, is she?
I think, I think once this.
I'm gonna.
Executive session.
So, once we enter executive session, I'll be pausing the recording, I would be taking minutes in executive session. I would be putting members of the public and other employees not part of this current. Case into the waiting room and we're hoping to bring everyone back in and restart their recording. At seven P M.
Okay.
So I think there was a motion and a second, we just need the roll call to enter.
Mr. Jemian, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I, yes.
All right, let me quickly do figure this out on Zoom. Um, and then I will get. See. So we'll see everyone shortly. All right, I think we are good. Let me pause. Just make sure that we followed everything. All right, we're good, we followed process properly. So we're back in open session as voted in from the previous executive session.
And have you let everybody back in, Shane?
That is correct, I have.
I just pulled forward documents, so. All right, so before we get to item three, I'll read. The town manager still has us via remote. Meetings because of the strict limitations, there are people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No unpleasant attendance in the numbers of public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded in forty-eight hours, we'll post a link to the recording on the town's website and our social media pages. Following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board that are speaking remotely, I'm Patrick Frisco, the Chair, Mr. Raymond De Gemian. Miss Esther Rojas, Miss Esther Rojas, Mr. Michael McDonald. Uh, Mr. Michael McDonald, Vice Chair. Mr. Stephen Geller. And Miss M J Spagon. During this meeting, all roll calls will be taken, all votes will be taken as roll calls. Following Bridgewater Town Staff, it's also participating remotely.
It's a great fantasy, the tunnel Bridgewater, Indiana. My son, Mr. Stephen Solari, the building commissioner.
Yes.
Mr. Stephen Solari, the building commissioner. At this time, everyone's mics are muted, board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. We do have a public hearing this evening that allows public comment. We ask to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name, your address and your question. The host will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, you'll be unmuted when the host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, give it a star nine to raise your hands. I'll go back to my agenda.
Mister Chair, could I make a request to the board, just for the sake of time? If I could request to the board to take the item for Jasmine Way out of order. So the board would just have to vote to.
I apologize, my. Screen.
Believe it is the third item.
It's the fourth item.
Fourth item.
Somebody wants to take, make a motion, by the time you get there, I'll be there.
That's all right, I'll, I'll make a motion to move the fourth item on the agenda to the third item on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion, the second to take item four out of order. This is the public hearing. For.
Zero Jasmine Way.
This is the. So then two lot one and five.
Yeah, could we just have a vote on that for the motion, second?
Oh, motion. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, we just need a vote.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
McDonald's.
Did you say? Yes.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. Ross.
Yep, yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes, you're breaking up, Pat, sometimes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Here can.
All right. So I've been following. Order at zero Jasmine Way, that seventy-two lot one oh five, M S F Property Holdings LLC. This is site plan review on the section ten point six of the Bridgewater planning code. We do have a continuation request, corrections there, over.
Uh, yes, we received a, a request for a continuance to the February first meeting from the applicant. Uh, I received that request yesterday and forwarded to the board today. Um, so they are requesting to hold their hearing in two weeks, I know this was the hearing that. Um, when mailings were sent out, was notified today, but I just wanted to. Have the board kind of rest this matter and. Either allow the continuance or not allow the continuance to the February first meeting, just for the sake of time, or if anyone, any members of the public are here. Uh, to speak on that matter that they're aware as well.
Okay, so, um, we have a continuation request. Do we have them? Uh, so, so Shane, do you? Do you want to see if there are running members of the public here for this hearing?
No, I would not, I would not ask for anyone, I just want to make sure for the sake of time that. You know, we weren't going to go through two-ten Broad Street with whatever time they're going to be allotted and then get to Zero Jasmine Way and then state there's a continuance, just for the sake of time for any members of the public here.
Mr. Mr. I'm sorry, because typically we don't, so. So we have a request to Zero Jasmine Way to come very fast, uh, meeting at six thirty and to continue, do we have a motion?
I can place a motion to postpone, no way until February first.
I'll second. You're, you're not audible, Pat, you're breaking up again.
Yeah. Do we have any discussion? Yeah, so since, since I have a question, since there was a mailing and stating when the, when this was going to happen, do they have to send out a new mailing that it was continued another day?
No, um, this is part of the, this meeting is part of the record. Um, so it would just be for people to who are attending now or here on behalf of that. Um, to just be aware of these requests and, um, the upcoming agendas and I'm happy to take any correspondence from any members of the public here. Or any interested parties moving forward, um, I'm happy to, um, accept any questions, comments or concerns, um, over at my email. Um, with the town planner, so if anyone needs any assistance, feel free to call or give me an email.
All right, so the motion, last second, any more discussion? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. De Gemian?
Yes.
And I, yes, thank you. Can you, you guys hear me okay now?
Better.
Uh, item three, item three.
Regular order, this is a continued public hearing at seven P M. This is two-ten Broad Street, this is the two-ten Broad Street Realty LLC. For sake of.
Special permit continues from August third, seventeenth, September seventh, and nineteenth, October nineteenth, November second, November sixteenth, December sixth.
And most recently, the January fourth meeting. So, um, I know we asked for the applicant to clean up the packet a little bit after our last meeting. If the board is okay with it, I'll turn it over to the applicant to give us an update.
Sure. Uh, good evening, everyone, for the record, Eric Dias, Registered Professional Engineer with Strong Point Engineering Solutions. Uh, on the call with us tonight is Janesh Patel and Jemmen Patel from the applicant. Um, the last time we were here, as you said, Mister Chairman, we had a couple of things to clean up with regard to both the civil and the architectural plans. So if I can share my screen, I'll walk through those quick changes with you and hopefully we can. Come to a resolution on this one tonight, um, I do, when I try to share the screen, Shane, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
I have allowed it for now, so you're good.
Oh, here we go.
I'll fix.
All right. So if I can do this. Can everyone see the plan?
Yes.
Excellent, uh, so we had a few things to touch up, I'll just run through the plan set, so on the, um. The cover sheet, the only thing that changes is the revision date, the existing conditions plan has not changed at all. Um, we had an erroneous curb cut, pavement saw cut in this location here. That was from a prior iteration of the plans, that's been removed. Um, and but more importantly than that, on the layout sheet. We talked about, um, we had a notation for kid called Birm around the, the parking area, we've changed that to vertical granite curving, V G C, all the way around. Around this little landscape island here and then down on the southerly side of the property where we're doing the, um, a little low man seed area there to separate the two drive aisles. So the whole thing's edge with vertical granite curving, uh, we did provide the town's vertical granite curving detail from their subdivision by law. Um, and the last thing we did with regard to the civil plans is we specified. Better than location of the sign, the freestanding sign that's going to go in, uh, by code, that needs to be set back twelve feet from the property line. Um, so really, that's it with regard to the civil plans, with regard to the architectural plans, you'll remember, for whatever reason. We had a snaffle on our end, the last set of elevations that we submitted didn't reflect what we're actually intending. They still showed the overhang of the building and different treatments and things like that. So we've updated the architectural set, this is the view of the front of the building. Uh, there's a color palette treatment up here, but we're just looking at some grays, some different colored grays from the Benjamin Moore palette. Um, we're taking out the double door that's located over here and replacing that with a glass door. Um, and panels to fit into that, that hole, um, and things like that, so the elevations you've been provided much more accurately reflect. What it is that the building is going to look like. And that's the summary of the changes that we made.
Boy comments?
Uh, I think either. Um, Greg or somebody, we should go, just go over the issues that we discussed at the last meeting and just point out how they've been. Um, corrected on this new plan, that's all.
Hey, well, I, I did take a. Um, I, I look at the plans and reviewed them and. What was discussed at the last planning board meeting, they did, um. Revised the plan, the, the key thing again was the, um, the granite and the detailing. Um, around the, the parking areas and, and to protect, for the protection of the landscape, um, areas, they, um, did. Relocate the, um. The business sign, it does have to be twelve feet off, off of every property line to meet code and, and they've done that. Um, they've relocated the, uh, they've provided screening for the, for the dumpster. And, um. The, the other big thing that we haven't gotten to, uh, yet is the, um, the architecturals. But, um, you know, their, their parking count works, um, I believe. They only need twelve parking spaces, they provided thirteen. Um. The, the office space had about six hundred and five square feet gross floor area. Um, the, the new zoning ordinance requires, uh, through one space per three hundred. Um, so they, for the office space, they only needed two parking spaces, so. Um, they're good on their parking count, so I, I didn't see any issues with, uh, what I reviewed.
And additionally, Mister Tanzi divided a fourth engineering review that's been forwarded to the board.
Any other comments? From the board? Yeah, Mister Chair. So where in the plans is it showing how the dumpster is being screened?
Uh, we have not developed a plan to show the specific screening of the dumpster. Uh, we just, as we presented at the last meeting, we have labeled it as a, a two-yard rollout dumpster. We will likely have just enclose it in a, um. A screen chain link fence in this location, chain link that'll stick up higher than the dumpster, the two yard is very short, so we can do it with a five-foot chain link fence. Screen that with a gate on it that we can roll it out when we need to. But we have not provided a specific detail of that.
Okay.
I, I have a, another couple of questions about your, uh, exterior facade of the building. And your drawings, um, on the U P S store. Which, I'm fine, and I, and I can appreciate the work that you're going to be doing to this building. And I think what you've done, I, I see you've gone to a more of a flat, flat style roof going across the front. Which I'm okay with. My curiosity is, what is the, what is the finish on this building? And the reason I ask is because right now it's a standing metal seam building. Um, your finish schedule is calling for paint to be done on the front shingled area, which I believe you've gotten rid of. Um, and then you have another one in the, another paint color calling out for the front facade. I don't mean, and I, and I, and I don't mean to be nitpicky, but I just really.
I mean. It's gonna be.
The town, this is the first, this is the first building, first group of buildings that you see coming from East Bridgewater.
Right, and, and if I can speak, and I don't know if, um, but anyways, uh. The exterior where we're gonna take out the shingles, that's gonna be an E F S material. Uh, foam board and then concrete over and then.
Yeah, so is your, is your plan to do the whole building as E F S?
Ju- just the front, and if you're looking on the screen, the darker gray will be E F S and then the back, we're gonna paint it. Right, where we're, we're gonna get rid of the shingles, that's gonna be E F S, the front, and then in the back. Where the light gray is that you can see on the screen, that will be all painted.
So you, you're just gonna E F S the front, you're not gonna E F S back to the, to the high portion of the building?
No.
And then I, I guess I have another question, in your plans, if you're looking and you go back to your. You're drawing a one-twenty. Which is actually your first, your first floor reflected ceiling plan. Oh, keep going. Oh, yep, so you see in front of the garage door that you're putting in, and I can appreciate that you got rid of the garage door and you put in a nice looking storefront. Uh, i- is that an overhang that you plan on building in front, those lines? So there, there's a, a portion of the, right there. You know what that is?
Oh, we're not building anything there. So there, it went currently, when the garage door is open, there is a small. Area and then it opens up, but I think that's where the water and everything comes in, so that whatever is there, it will be there. We're not building anything new back there.
Okay. All right, I, I have no questions, I'm fine with the E F S private system. Any other board questions for the applicant? How about public comment, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this project? Public comment?
Do not see anyone with their virtuals hand raised nor in the chat, um, so Mister Chair, I do not see anyone, um, looking to, to public comment.
All right, so if we don't have any public comment and we don't have any more board comments? Mister Chair, I do, I do one more comment, and so if you, if you're looking at drawing a two hundred. I'm not quite sure why I'm seeing that. Um. It's calling out for a P T one, but I, I read that as the roof, or are you building a parapet?
Yep, I think Eric's pulling it up.
I'm waiting for her to pull it.
Yeah, where, where are you seeing that, let me scroll down.
Uh, drawing a two hundred and it's also drawing, um. A two oh one.
Hey, I, I believe what we're referring to is the roof in that, in that instance.
Would you, so you're, what is that roof material, you're gonna paint it? I don't know why your screen's not sharing, but I mean, if you want it.
Yeah, I can see it on my end, it's not sharing on. On your end for some reason.
Shane, can I share my screen?
Yeah. Uh, yeah. You may.
Everybody see?
Yeah.
So I'm talking this area right here.
That area right there, that looks like the roof, that probably shouldn't be shown as P T one in that location. That looks like a, an error, we're not gonna paint the roof of the building.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, because if I'm reading it correctly. Maybe I am.
Janesh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that should be like an asphalt shingle, is that right?
This is your funny, this is, this is the front of your building right here.
Mr. Patel, you're muted.
Oh, sorry about that, but, uh, I think that, that the white portion is just, there might be a railing there or some kind of. But we're gonna take that out, P T one, it was just supposed to be. Everything in the front was gonna be dark brown and then the back portion was gonna be light brown. And that was it, so we're not painting on top of the roof, but. The front portion will be dark brown and then the back, the garage and all that stuff is just gonna be a lighter gray, shade of gray.
So you're talking gray, a gray and chocolate.
Yeah.
All right, I'll stop sharing.
Uh, but we're not doing anything to the roof for anything like that.
Okay. And, and when you have a second tenant, I'm assuming the sign is gonna go next to the other one?
Yes. Yep.
And I know you have signed one of them, so I can't control the size of the sign, but that's fine. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate turning it around that quickly.
Right, and Mister Geller, you broke up.
All right, I, I just appreciate the applicant turning it around this quick.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments, last chance for board comments, public comments? All right, so I don't think we rescinded the, um, was there a formal letter? Request to rescind the special permit, was that?
I read, I received the correspondence that I forwarded over to the board, um, uh, in an email request for withdrawal without prejudice. Um, for the special permit, is the permit, um. Initial special permit request, uh, based on our zoning ordinances due to the fact it's not, not needed anymore.
All right, so first thing we should probably do is do a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
And Mister De Gemian for a second?
A second.
Discussion? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
You're breaking up again, Pat. Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Mister De Gemian?
Yes.
And I, yes. All right, so now we have a request to, I don't know. We draw the special permit application. We have a motion to accept the, we do a draw request for the special permit.
So moved.
I missed dinner, Geller, for a second.
Okay.
Mister De Gemian in discussion? Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
Mister De Gemian?
Yes.
Yes. So do we have any discussion? On the. So he's plan approval, we have a draft letter. A draft decision letter provided by. So Brian?
Yeah, but I have an updated draft, uh, decision letter provided to the board, um, as recently as last week. I think the only thing that I would, uh, probably add to that, just looking at the plans one more time. Um, would be the addition of a, a, another curb stop at that last parking space, so other than that, um, I've provided a draft decision. Uh, in, in to Mister Geller's comments in terms of the dumpster and the screening, um. This is something that we can place as a condition prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. As well, if, uh, the board so chooses, um. The way I've kind of set up these, uh, the decisions are a little different than previous. Uh, what I'm trying to do with, uh, these new draft decisions is kind of give. The town and board guidance of timelines, so we have a, do, we do have a general conditions. Sort of section of our decision making as well as requirements for the applicant to fulfill before construction, before endorsement. Um, noting the pre-construction meeting, um, in the engineering fee that comes with that. And additionally, during construction and post-construction requirements, so we're all on the same page.
All right, so I think those are two additional. Conditions we may want to consider, um, the dumpster screening. As, you know, squid away prior to occupancy permit and, um, the last, the, the curb stop at that last spot. Anything else that we should consider in addition to, um, what Mister O'Brien has proposed? Any discussion and deliberation on the public hearing? Does somebody want to make a motion on the public hearing, on, on the, uh, project?
I'll make a motion to accept the project as presented with the general conditions. Along with the two added conditions that we spoke about. Um, today.
Uh, motion by Mister Geller, just for. Uh, motion by Mister Geller, just for clarification, Mister Geller, you're referring to the 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 decision letter prepared and. Presented to us uh by Mister. O'Brien?
That's correct, with the addition of the dumpster screaming and the added uh curb stop.
Do we have a second?
A second now.
Second motion to improve uh the decision like provided by Mister. For running with the two decision conditions, any of it's.
Uh, Mister Chair, do you want me to just go? Share the screen for the draft decision letter or is it fine that we're?
I think that's part of our discussion, let's 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 look at it.
Alright, I just wanna kinda, no, don't. Don't worry, don't worry, Eric, there's nothing scary. Let me just pull it up. Just trying to remember how to.
So we'll keep the motion in the second if you're okay with that, Mister Ryan, let's make another discussion.
Sure thing. Um, let me just make sure I got everything. The draft letter just stating um the request um for a site plan and a special permit um an administrative calendar with the hearing officers as part of this case.
Um, could, actually, could you go? Was MJ Spagon was um a hearing officer even though Mister Geller did the?
I I just wanted to note at some point MJ was the associate and alter alternate as part of this.
Uh, no, no problem, I know Mister Geller did the Mullen rule, correct?
Correct, I just wanted to make sure that it it was noted that MJ did participate as the associate and alternative alternate um as part of this. Um, inclusions to the records of proceedings, um. You know, some of these will be updated due to um received. By the engineering, but I think this is primarily just noting exhibits and plans so we can note on the plan, so. We will include um Mister Tanzi's uh new review letter as well as um. The uh Mister Diaz's request. I'm just noting findings of fact. Um, zoning analysis simulation, the memorandum that both the applicant and the board seen. Um. Courses be updated to match the vote, um this would be matching the withdrawal without prejudice as well as. Spelling withdrawal correctly. Um, but the conditions of approval would be um. Very general in terms of waivers of the regulations. Shall be authorized without formal vote sidewalks and walkways shall be clear of snow storage, snow storage shall not obstruct so. And additionally, if snow storage cannot be. Um, preserved on site, they will be trucked offsite. Making sure everything except uh meets. ADA accessibilities hours of construction are typical of the town seven to five. Uh, Monday through Friday, nine AM, nine AM to five PM on Saturday, no work on Sundays. Um. You know, the the conditions, the approval shall be binding upon the uh landowner applicant and future assigns. Um, these changes, um, you know, other modifications that are subsequent shall uh come back before this board. Sight lighting. Uh, curb ramps shall be labeled applicant shall install the the landscaping as noted. The dumpster shall be screened from public view. Um. Connections to municipal infrastructure. Um, other permits beyond the the scope of the board shall be uh required um if necessitated. Um, if there has to be any modification or cut or replacing the sidewalk along the front, the applicant shall replace with same material. Um, updated plans shall be reviewed by uh the staff to meet said conditions daily cleanup. Uh, failure to comply can be a revocation of the permits assigned. Demolition and erosion control plans submitted prior to the endorsement of the plan. Fortunately for the app, they did provide this, but this will be noted prior to endorsement. Prior to endorsement, the final plans shall be uh submitted to reflect um. Any changes part of these conditions. Uh, rules, regulations uh shall be posted on the plans um and the approval is valid for two years. So pre-construction meeting as noted, uh sign a receipt of acknowledgement of decisions, I can craft that together. Prior to construction uh start date. Um, the deposit of twenty five hundred dollars um which we know in our pre-construction meetings and notification. Uh, forty eight hours of advance and a copy of the approval shall be provided on site. Um, for authorized activity. Prior to occupancy, so this will include um, you know, certificate, a site plan which we typically. Require for all plans. Um. A project review uh shall can talk, contact the planning board prior to requesting of any occupancy, not delay. Uh, we've placed this into the decisions because we do get people that. Email us and say, hey, can you give me a CO immediately, I got a tenant, uh please, please, for the love of God. Give us like a week and don't rush us. Um, the applicant shall contact the planning board prior to that. Uh, that's what you said, stone wall improvements shall be in working order prior to uh CO. Um, any, if there's any deviations through the construction that shall be noted and submit to staff to prove. Uh, determine if this is some sort of minor modification that was necessitated that would require um board action. Uh, so. We would include the uh curb stop to the uh endorsement of the prior to the endorsement. As well as prior to occupancy, the screening information about the dumpster. Um, so post occupancy, making sure that they meet. Uh, town code and then any fencing lighting that um is. Poorly maintained that the applicant please uh. Provide this in a presentable condition as per any town ordinances or zoning ordinances, so. With the granting of the vote and the signature of the chair. Et cetera, et cetera, so if anyone had any questions, comments, complaints. Send them my way.
Alright, any more discussion on this? So we have a motion and we have a second to approve with the conditions that we just discussed along with the two additional conditions we discussed. If everybody's good, I'll take the roll. Any more discussion? Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Jimmy?
Yes.
Mister Ross?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
I'm yes. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you.
Alright, back to the packet. Item. Five, this is your show, Mister O'Brien. You wanted to talk about subdivision rules, regulations that you're proposing.
Sure thing, uh, so I sent everyone a a red line version of the subdivision rules and regulations that uh I'm looking to. Ament at this time, just based on uh, you know, a couple of scans of the document, I've had a. Few meetings with DPW in regards to some of their suggestions as well, I've had no meetings with the building department on this, so sorry, Steve. Uh, so, oh, we've we've talked about other things, um, so I'm gonna share my screen and kind of briefly go over some of the um changes. Um, I've sent you guys over a a bit of a preview of this presentation. And let me show all my windows, close the right thing, there it is. And um, I guess can everyone share my, see my shared screen? So this is just some, the update for the twenty twenty two, I'll, I guess the twenty twenty three now. Um, for the subdivision rules and regs as. Just for statement of fact, the planning board uh subdivision rules and regulations. Are documented that the planning board is allowed to update whenever they choose to be through as long as these amendments are done through a public meeting process. Um, so, you know, I believe the last time this document was updated was twenty eighteen, so there are some things that. Changed recently, um, as well as the the creation of a stormwater ordinance. As well as the recodification of the zoning ordinance uh. That has provided staff the opportunity to make some changes to this as well as just, you know, being the new town planner. Uh, the ability to kind of look at things and say who, let's try to. Prevent conflicts as much as we can with our docu- with our language and our subdivision rules and regs with the anticipation that. Future subdivisions follows the follow these regulations as well as. Uh, according to a lot of our stormwater regulations for site plan review, um. We do have certain requirements in our site plan review and is only ordinance actually refers to our subdivision rules and regs as kind of. The methodology for drainage systems and sidewalks as. Eric Diaz noted um recently uh with the previous project for two ten Broad Street, so. Um, so just kind of my agenda for today, I don't wanna, you know, take up too much time, um, because I think we do have opportunities to kind of. I I'm I'm not expecting any near knee- knee jerk reactions in regards to this, I think we can take our time and treat this more of like a workshop. Um, that can occur at, you know, uh. Less busy meetings and and kind of get to a a resolution as well as hear some board ideas as well as, you know. Hear public comment on regards to this as well. Um, so. You know, accept these comments, look for comments, review these comments and brainstorm some additional ideas that. Could allow for this document to be altered uh or as well as my ideas to be altered as well. Um, so um on page seven uh of this and I I kind of break broke this down and kind of its simplest form. Um. I do have the document and the red line version available online um as well. If anyone wants a a copy and they'll be, it'll be. An ever-changing copy and I hope that we'll have a finalized version similar to kind of the process for the the zoning recodification to be noted online and. Present those changes over time. Um, just to make sure that we have the document that everyone's been a part of. And has reviewed properly. Um. So one of the things I wanted to note um through the filing fees that we haven't noted. Uh, is that making sure that every applicant is. Aware of the the town engineering review fee of twenty five hundred dollars. And that the additional professional review fee is required for inspections, so that totals out to about. Five thousand dollars in most cases, you know, the there could be a request for that number two increase based on the amount of inspections to be completed. Um, but I just wanted to note that through the application process, so. A lot of people aren't surprised by it and as noted previously when discussing site plan. Um, we do have our site plan application fees. Within our subdivision rules and regulations, so it's 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 kind of a weird process where. You know, people actually have to dive into our our subdivision rules and regulations to um. Note the the fact that there's certain application fees as part of it. Uh, additionally too is uh one of the items that I've eliminated because um. The previous director and I Jennifer uh discussed, uh, trying to find a situation where a site plan without impervious surface creation would occur. Uh, we had it non-applicable on the fee schedule. Uh, which didn't make any sense. So I just eliminated that from the document. So um. I'm also happy to take any questions as we go, um, or if we wanna wait till the end to ask questions, I can go back and forth, that's totally fine. Um, so in terms of definitions, uh, I'm looking to amend certain definitions, uh. So they're uh applicable within the town zoning ordinances. Um, you know, we we have a tendency to have a definition in our town zoning ordinance. In our subdivision rules and regulations that don't really mesh with each other. Um, so my preference for this is to essentially say our zoning ordinance take precedent. Not to kind of repeat. Ourselves and note that, you know, refer to our zoning ordinance. When we say for certain definitions, but in terms of our subdivision rules and regulations. Um, I've created some fixed definitions for agent applicant as built plan. Um, CBU. Certified male parcel porous pavement, the. I've changed porous pavement to pervious pavement. Um, change the definition of redevelopment, I think we actually eliminate um the term redevelopment as part of this. Um, because you're not gonna see a lot of redevelopment and subdivisions. Um, registered male and added the term shallow additionally, I I. After another review, just making sure that we correspond to our current zoning ordinance, uh. Changing some of the terms for definitions as our aquifer protection refers to the old section fifteen of the zoning bylaws. Um, so I wanted to replace that for what is the proper uh section is for our zoning ordinances. As well as uh where it states lot building area, change the term zoning bylaws to ordinance. As well as the redefine zoning bylaw and zoning map. To zoning ordinances and zoning uh map on there, um. So uh additionally to looking at the definitions of streets, I'm gonna have to look at some of the the terms for. Uh, our traffic counts for, because there was a question on. One of the roadways in the town Elm Street, um, if it it's due to kind of some of the 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 higher levels of traffic in that area. Um, if it's gone from what we consider a. I don't think we have it as an arterial street, let me. Pull it up quickly. Uh, but I think we had it as a different definition as part of this. So. I believe Elm Street is, let me control fine quick. I think we consider it a collector in an arterial where um. Just based on the traffic, it may be a higher class. Uh, but let me just put that. Apologies. Streets.
Shane, can I interrupt a second?
You can always interrupt.
No, you don't want that. Um. I I'm not sure what what we're, what the process is right now, I'm I'm, first of all, I commend you on on this, this looks very.
Yes, it's not, it's not fun and exciting, I know.
No, 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 I'm I'm serious, uh, the thing is that. Um. Is it going out to? Everybody that may have some input, like obviously Steve. Uh, he's here right now, Steve Slar, but others that may have input into this. And then maybe have an another open session where we. You know, go over things and discuss each one individually and then at some point go on.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do anything on the, at the direction of the board, um. So i- it's just a question of, you know, who 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 those parties would be. Um, is it?
For instance, I mean, further down you have, and I'm glad you did, you have the shade trees. And and that's something that obviously I do want the tree committee to look at.
Sure.
Um, but I mean, there there may be other parts of this that other boards may uh wanna have some input, that's all.
Yeah, I I just, uh, the only time, the only part I would hesitate is i- in terms of a directive of like, if if we're looking to talk to certain engineers and. People that do work in the town. Um, I don't wanna come off as biased, I just, you know, kind of, you know, through hearsay, I just kind of let people know. That we've been amending our subdivision rules and regs and through this public process, which doesn't have to, you know. Come off with a decision today or the next time or the next time or the next time, but you know, it 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 could be a a working document. Um, I just, my thing is, you know, looking at it from a a. A public standpoint in terms of some of these decisions, you know, some of, some of them aren't egregious. Um, some of them are just kind of redefining.
Yeah, no, it's good. Pat, what what I'm just curious, what what's your, what's your, what are you thinking of the process here?
Um, you know, I think. I think Shane should work for as much as possible and maybe send it to. Uh, Mister Tanzi, Mister Natanara, one of Mister Solanarey. Stop on, you know, those, those people that we typically interact with on subdivision approvals. And see if there's anything I would ask to wetlands, the building codes or. The DPWs that we missed, maybe. I mean, there's some of the back and forth like between very real team working out. Going to teach and contact those people directly, see if they have any input. And before we have a public hearing, I'd obviously have those to help us review it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I like I said, any any direction from the board, you know, is um, I'm happy to. Kind of work through this process, um, I I have reached out for feedback and I've had, you know. Meetings with DPW um as well. Um, but yeah, and internal conversations within the department as well. Um, so yeah, I'm happy to reach out um to additional parties. Uh.
Yeah, I, you know, I I went through the whole thing, can I just quickly, the whole document?
Yeah.
All the changes, I think that um. You know, really nice hours, funny, I mean, a lot of people were scrimmaging or updating definitely things or. You know, updating standards, etc, but.
Breaking up Pat again.
Like updating standard and stuff like that, one, one question I had, and I have talked to Mister Natanara about the photo and you might wanna reach out to him. And and maybe Mister Tanzi. Greg, what's, you know, I I understand why when you went to the monolithic firm and his name was that, just kind of rolling monolithic. But. You know, for somebody that lives in a firelot subdivision that was involved in the construction of it. We may have saved this in the box, but in terms of sidewalks. It stinks, I mean, i- if if people pass on the street with a monolithic problem. They almost always talk about the side. The sidewalk, like completely the sidewalk. Because it is so gradual, they try to get off the road, right, I think it's just, just human nature. And I think prior to that, we have a, an ordinance. That requires. It looks like to be all vertical ground. Flower, flower shoes and they are very difficult for the clouds. But it seems like, you know, if you go through Rainier. Or any of the surrounding towns, it seems like, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but it seems like if there's a certain. Degree radius. It's, it's vertical granite, if there's a catch base. I don't even think, do they call it like a mouth that's granite? And the sidewalk curbing is granite. And the sidewalk curbing is granite, everything else can be monolithic. It just seems like we end up with really crappy sidewalks. That don't really get used to become parking spaces when you have a monolithic berm, that's just my opinion.
Um yeah, um a a typical sidewalk. Typically had has a um a green strip in between the the berm or the curb in the in the sidewalk. Um and that that just helps to um. Yeah, keep the 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 uh the traffic. You know, the uh that that's parked pretty much on on the edge of the of of the Cape Cod berm. Um there there's an, and then. Um a lot of. Towns are getting into with where they're gonna have a paved Cape Cod berm. And a at a catch basin, they would have. A um a granite throat stroke, throat stone curbing with uh two transition. Stones on either side of the the catch basin. Like you, like you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, um you know, some some towns are are doing that and. It seems to hold up. Uh fairly well. There are, there are a number of options. It's um it it's probably gonna be a balance between practicality. And um aesthetics that the board might. Deem uh more favorable. Um again, a lot of this is a um comes down to a a decision of the board. Um I would, I I tend to um stay away from. Sloped granite edging because the DEP, the DPW has had. A number of maintenance issues with such curbing. Um it looks great when it when it's new, but one of the problems is when when the pavement abuts up to a sloped. Edging of of granite. Right at the interface of the pavement and the granite, you've got. You know, a very shallow or or narrow. Layer of pavement, you don't get a full, you know, inch and a half and or two and a half, three inches of. A binder and and top course right abutting the curb. Um and then granite curbing. Um although it costs a lot more, it sure does hold up a lot better than the than the concrete curbing. Some. Some towns um. Will require a granite curbing around a cul-de-sac or around a um. Curve inlets. And that's because those um. Edgings tend to get hit by plows a lot more than the straight way. And then sometimes I've seen they they would allow the straight ways of of the side of the roads to go to a a concrete curb. But the um the the turning radii. Uh going into a road or around a cul-de-sac, they've required um. It to be granite, so the these are a few ideas, a few options that I've seen throughout the town that. May hold up a little bit better or achieve the better, you know, achieve what the um planning board is looking for.
Yeah, and to Greg's point as well, um. You know, i- it's making sure that the board places, if the board's expecting a higher standard when it comes to curbing. Or other requirements is that that's placed within the subdivision rules and regulations. Um and if an applicant wishes to. Request a waiver, so say there's an applicant that comes in and the board requires that. Um vertical granite curbing shall be allowed um or required as part of any curbing on residential roads. Any applicant can come in and request a waiver for. Cape Cod berm and present their argument to the board, whether it be a cost argument or just in terms of. Labor or whatever argument they provide before the board, they have the ability to do so. However, if there's a case of residential roads in the form of what how we have it required right now. The board can't ask beyond that, they can ask what their subdivision rules and regulations requires. Because there, you know, I've I've heard from certain developers and certain people that. You know, it's the fear that the board asks beyond the scope of these subdivision rules and regulations, is that the board can ask. The standards are placed on these subdivision rules and regulations and what the board expects, and if anyone has. Something that they need to request a waiver from, they can do so. So I I I I think that's a, I think a fair point in terms of what the board expects. From this and there is a process to allow for that, just not a process in reverse where the board is like, well, you know, I want. Sidewalk on both sides, vertical granite curbing, when our current regulations don't even state that.
Okay, and I, you know, I. I understand what Greg's saying, you could put a grass strip there and stuff, but then that. That might require a greater right away with, so and I don't know if we have, you know, to have that room, so. I and I just, if, we we don't have to decide tonight, if we could get some feedback from DPW about. Vertical granite at radii and the the catch basins and just the sidewalk, because I. I just, I just think it's, I just think when you have a a monolithic berm, that what is that, what is a monolithic berm come up three inches, Greg? Over time, maybe four?
Yeah, through typically it's um, you know, you you Cape Cod um vituinous uh monolithic berm is. Uh a minimum of 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 a foot wide and three inches high.
And that's that that's so that's so gradual, it's almost just an extension of the road, you know?
Yeah, um but what it it is effective in in. Conveying, you know, gutter flows to catch basins.
Well, I I I think, I think, I think it works fine for drainage purposes and. I understand it's less maintenance, you don't get the weeds and all that stuff, but. Just if we're trying to create like walkover communities and safe sidewalks, it makes for a really crappy sidewalk, that's all.
Yeah, and and I think the expectation too is that uh in our noted in our rules and regulations that. These standards are held for roads that are. Uh all collector and sub collectors require vertical granite curbing, which uh most of them have been developed on. Uh and pretty much would go through an A and R process, whereas these residential roads. Uh where curbing is required shall be in the form of yada, 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 and then additionally too, no curbing is required for subdivisions of four or less. One family dwelling units, so who knows how many of those we'd be seeing in the future? And the board would be looking at standards that essentially say. Oh, you you know, you can't require, if the board wanted curb in terms of a forward lot um. Single family subdivision, there's sub, your subdivision rules and regulations essentially preclude you for asking for that.
Yeah, I I I'm not trying to change that, I just, if, you know, I I I'm trying to get to that section. But, you know, I think, I think, I think a wonderful lawsuit doesn't require a sidewalk, so. You know, we don't have to worry about granite there, right?
But, oh yeah, it doesn't require curbing at all.
Or a sidewalk.
Correct.
But I think, um let's see, so. Yeah, so uh, so uh. So not to have five residential units, you'd have one sidewalk, right? At five feet, so that, oh, so one side of the street. You know, I just, I I the Rainham Preserve, they just topped out in the fall, and I noticed for the fall that the sidewalk sign. Had the vertical granite and the monolithic was everywhere else, so. Um maybe, maybe we put there's a sidewalk. Uh you know, that that will be particularly small, something to penalize them, but if there's a sidewalk, it's wide sidewalk. And curving needs to be vertical green.
That's why, that's why we have the conversations, Mr. Chairman.
We have a few of that, so.
So, so yeah, I'm it's, I'm happy to add that and as well as have conversations um further with DPW regarding that. Um but I'm happy to go through my presentation, the rest of my presentation quickly, and then we can kind of have a continuing conversation. In regards to other items, oh, oh, what's going on here, okay? So let me share my screen again, just go through the. Rest of it, oh, sorry, gotta figure out where we placed it. Hold on. Sorry, I got too many things open. It's close to ten brought out.
On the trees, I know a tree we can get rid of, is that pantry?
Yeah, we can get rid of the pear trees, and I just wanted to note to to um. Ray as well, uh you know, in in terms of the differences between. Shade trees and street trees, I think the expectation with the subdivision rules and regulations are for trees. Uh within subdivision rule requirements, the largest subdivisions. Um street trees, so I I did change the definition. Um as part of this process from shade trees to street trees, because it does come become confusing. And with the enactment of a tree committee, um I think as as kind of advisory to certain boards. I think it's, I think it'll be beneficial to not confuse the two and kind of let street trees follow under the the correspondence. Um of only planning board action. So anyways, um filing procedure on page twenty four. Um in our current regulations for submitting a subdivision. Uh it says that the planning board may require an applicant to produce evidence evidence of ownership, changing that to shell. Uh we should probably do that. Um so I'm hoping that that's a an action that we look to continue in the future. Um and as part of the amendments, um as well as um pull out in the portion of uh page forty seven. In regards to homeowners with uh subdivisions with homeowners associations. Um make sure that this is clearly defined as its own section and additionally add um some. A requirement that the board may ask town council for review of any HOA documentation, because. The more subdivisions we've been seeing, especially when we do have a requirement of. Um in our current subdivision rules and regulations regarding HOAs uh to be part of any subdivisions for or less. Uh we want to make sure that there is proper documentations. Um when it comes to stormwater and if these roadways are gonna be maintained as private. Um that we have the ability to kind of see some of these HOA documentations and make sure that they're adequate based on the board's initial decision. Um so as noted previously, um kind of with the process in terms of waivers, uh I wanted to add to the section up. The section of utilities waivers pages sixty eight, it says all utilities sewer, water, drain, gas, electric, et cetera, et cetera, shall be placed underground. Unless otherwise waived by the board, so. You know, we do have a waivers process, but I just want to note that through there, so there's no. Um surprises in the future that someone doesn't, isn't aware of these situations, so. Like I said, previous changing uh shade trees to street trees, um I'm categorizing certain trees. Um for ones that we have currently um to not allow certain trees and then kind of. State species type as well, because uh we don't have the species types currently on. In our subdivision rules and regulations, and sometimes when we get a plan set. Uh some of these are featured as their species type, so I just wanted to note the species type. Um as part of these, but this is a continuing uh conversation, and I'm happy to talk further. Um with Ray and this uh. Board as well in terms of uh street opportunities. Um streetlights, I added a section in terms of uh that the applicants shall provide information on streetlights in the form of a photometric plan. Um noting uh food foot candle information similar to um. What we received for site plan, so I know we have a lot of discussion about um. Uh the dark sky um requirements, um I hope I said that right. Uh but making sure that if the applicants are providing uh these streetlights that they provide some sort of photometric plan. Um noting the the light cover of these proposals. Um on page sixty six, we talk about cleaning up. Uh so we're cleaning up the subdivision rules and regulations as well as cleaning up the cleaning up section. So right now, i- it stays before the sale of any lot. Um an applicant shall clean up any debris on caused by street construction installation of utilities. I don't know how the heck we can control that, because we're not part of the sale process. So uh we're we're putting this in before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of any lot. That the applicant shall clean up debris on street construction um as part of this, so we do have some sort of. Record to hold them to it, because we can't really do that with the sale of a lot. Um additionally too, with the subdivision identification signs, um we currently have it as the the developer may install a sign. Um for marketing purposes, as long as they are removed prior to street acceptances. Uh however, some of these roads will never be accepted, so um for roads that remain private, uh these shall be uh removed prior to the occupancy of the. Final house, because there is a that caveat that would allow for that subdivision identification sign to exist. Uh for a long time. Uh additionally too, um you know, having discussions with DPW. Um one of the things that I I added um is noting that there is a stormwater maintenance fee. Um as noted by DPW and required required to be paid by DPW as maintenance. Um typically, we've held these within the bonds of these, but in itself, it's its own fee. And shouldn't be really a consideration of the bond, it should be its own separate entity, so just noting that as well. Um and uh having conversations with other town engineer and associate engineer. Making sure uh with the design standards for stormwater drainage, uh the removal of language of the rational method uh for onsite drainage. Uh the maintenance of an area shall be borne on the developer rather than state the cost of developing, so just. The developer handles it, the five year storms changed to the two year storms. Um the structural practices for water quality and best management practices reflect our stormwater ordinance and regulations currently with our subdivision rules and regulations. They didn't match uh the new stormwater ordinance and that that drain line covers to be installed at three foot of cover to avoid frost penetration up. Frost penetration rather than the three feet and six inches, so that's what I have for today. Um terms of the uh as well as um. The red line version provided to the board, um but I I think uh having good, healthy, continuing discussions. On the subdivision rules and regulations, and if the board has any questions, comments or concerns regarding this. Or any suggestions to uh follow up on, I'm happy to um take those on.
Uh um if I may. I think what Shane has done is really important and something that needs to be uh. Discussed in detail and I would recommend that. That i- i- if it hasn't gone out to. The people that are that are going to need to comment on it should, and then we set aside a good portion of a meeting to really go into detail. And uh. Decide whether we want to go ahead with these changes and modify them or not, I think in general, it's it's worthwhile. I mean, they they look very good, and I I would be, um I'm glad we're going through this process now, so I I I'm just suggesting that. That at some meeting that we give a good portion of time to actually deciding on on these issues.
I I completely agree.
And I don't want it to get kicked down the road too too, I wanna keep it in front of us, so. Ray, you're suggesting that we have. You know, uh we have, we have Shane seek out more input and continue to to work this. And then maybe in in they go right to a public hearing on it, or do you wanna have another workshop after he tunes it up somewhat?
Uh uh it seems to me if he's, if if the people that need to be informed get informed. That we can uh simply have a public hearing on it and and go over each each one in detail.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm fine with that, so so Shane, how much more time do you want to work this and and when would you like to?
Uh I think we can do the second meeting in February of the board, um I think that would give me enough time to. Make amendments and updates, um you know, I'm hoping that.
You and you'd be ready to be able to advertise and everything at a public hearing, is that correct?
Well, we don't have to put, we don't have to advertise pub subdivision rules and regulation changes.
Oh, we don't?
This is just, i- i- it could be done as long as it's noted on the agenda. So it doesn't have to be placed in the newspaper, it just has to be held at a public, it has to be held at a public. Meeting of the board where we do accept, so it's a public hearing to the extent that we do accept. Public input, you know, we can't state to the public, you're not part of this, i- it is, it's public comments. However, it's not something that has to be, and I I can recheck with this, but I've not seen anything in Master and Law that requires the board to. It's not, it's much different than a zoning ordinance change, i- it's, you know, whenever the board kind of has. The the ability to properly notice. Um on an agenda for subdivision rules and regulation changes, they can do so.
I think you're right. What's on the agenda beyond the second meeting in February right now?
Uh currently, nothing, um Jasmine Way, Jasmine Way was been continued to the February first meeting.
I would recommend putting it on the agenda and not putting much else. Other than that on the agenda. It's important, we need to, we need to finalize this at some point, I think, we get, suggestions are good, we should talk about it. It's important, we need to, we need to finalize this at some point, I think, we could, suggestions are good and we should talk about it.
I'm on board, having the second session.
Anyone else?
Works for me.
Alright, so, uh, anybody else, Michael or MJ?
Fine by me.
I have no objections, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, we do have two other people in here, I don't know if there's any public comment on the matter.
Is there any public comment on, um, what we discussed this evening and the. Plan to continue this to the second meeting in February?
No, but we, we are happy to accept public comment and as well as place it. Um, and I guess do more promotion, I guess, of this, uh, act. Of our subdivision rules and regulations, um. Based on some of these redline versions, so I'll, I'll, I'll upload, um. The latest redline version on our website, I do have under planning board applications on the town's website. I do have a section under twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Trying to get that out there, that has all our information, all our site plans, agendas, et cetera, et cetera, so it'll be placed under there, under its own category of, uh. Uh, twenty twenty-three subdivision rules and regulations, uh, amendments, so I'll place it over there, um, for any members or people watching this. On YouTube, um, to, uh. Take part and check out.
Yeah, okay. Alright, great, so you, you know, I don't think we need a, um. Emotionally, like, we could just ask you to put it off of the second meeting in February, sure.
Sure thing. I'll do that.
Um, next item on the agenda.
It's the December minutes.
Seven minutes, um, I just said one, that is a, there are. Yeah, this is Mr. Haley, that was the Hurley.
Uh. I can fix that.
Keep breaking up.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear those last two things back. I'm sorry, wh- what was that?
You need a new speaker, Pat.
Yeah, do you need this one of these headsets?
The next meeting, I want to have a headset, just like Shane.
It sounded like you wanted a motion for approval of the twelve-six twenty-two minutes. Okay. With the condition that you placed it.
Where is my speaker on this laptop? Is there, is there?
And I miss the days we get to get those, uh, big old pink attachments and.
They're typically, they're typically on the side, but that's fine, if you just get a webcam, it'll, it'll work that way. Web, webcam or the, um, the headset? Yeah. So I'll make a motion to accept the planning board meeting. Do we have a second? And Mr. Jemian?
Yeah.
Take the roll, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
I mean, yes. So Shane, can, was that your planet committee? Board report, so we can, we're done with that?
Uh, yeah, I just want to quickly note that, um, I do, we do have a new director of community and economic development, Bob Rully. He was unfortunately unable to attend this meeting. Um, but he's looking to attend the next meeting and kind of give a introduction and overview of who he is. And kind of what his, uh, expectations are, I guess, in the future, and I guess, like, we can do kind of a Q and A, whatever the board kind of. Feels at that meeting.
Alright.
So we can throw that at the end too.
Any other, um, discussion?
Just a quick update on the tree committee, um, we still need two new people, we will have them at the next meeting, uh, the, uh, I didn't realize when we. Look for an arborist or somebody at Arborist qualifications, that we need a town resident, uh. And I think we'll, we'll be all set, our next meeting is the fourteenth. Um, at two o'clock, and hopefully at that time we'll look at Shane's, um. Um, recommendations regarding trees. But I, the bottom line is the tree committee is going through some teething problems, getting functioning, but it's going, it's, it's moving along.
Good to hear. The fact that it exists is great.
We're also trying to get, uh, highway, some money for a boom truck. But that's a whole nother story.
Alright, do we, any other discussion?
I want to go get some ice cream.
It'll be noted in the minutes.
I know, I see with blueberries on top. My good time snack.
You have a motion to adjourn, so Ray can go eat?
Yeah.
This is getting, this is getting late for Ray.
That's right, you're exactly right.
Yeah, I just need a second. Got a second? Astrid.
So motion at second to adjourn, um, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
I'm, yeah, slow working on my headset, good to meet you.
Do something.
I apologize.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Good night.
Night, everyone.